Voice.
Yep, I hear you fine.
Okay. We'll be starting in a moment.
Big crowd?
I'd say so. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. At this time, I will call the special meeting of the Board of Supervisors, June 22nd, 2022, to order. We will begin with the pledge to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Chairman Bell.
Present.
I'm sorry, I always have done this in the past. Do you want to do it? Okay, Vice Chairman Hughes.
Here.
Supervisor Kircher.
Here.
Supervisor Volmer.
Here.
Supervisor Gardella.
Here.
All present.
Thank you, Betsy. For those in the crowd, thank you for coming in the rain. And our solicitor joins us by phone this evening.
Um, hello.
Hi, Chad.
Hi.
I was just announcing to those in the room that you've joined us by phone. So we'll begin with public comment on agenda items. Due to a large number of agenda items, pardon me, public commenters, I would ask that folks do their best to keep it to three minutes so that everybody who signed up gets a chance to speak. That would be greatly appreciated. First guest this evening would be Vinnie Biancony. Vinnie, if you could approach the board and state your name and address for the record, please.
Always. Vincent Biancony, 3609 Perkeomen Avenue. Just want to let you know that I am definitely in favor of continuing on with the project. Living on Perkeomen Avenue for 25 years. My wife has grown up there for almost 50 years. You know, it's looking great, but you know, it's still got a lot of work to do, like, and people walk up and down Perkeomen Avenue all hours of the night, day or night, and it's constant. And I've been talking to my neighbors, encouraged them to try and email and such like that. And, you know, since the process of the whole PennDOT, you know, our sidewalks have taken a beating. And we were told we had a concrete apron. We were told that was going to be reinstalled. But they were waiting to do the concrete apron for when the sidewalks were going to be installed to make it match up better and such like that. But, uh, you know, we definitely want to have the project just continue. I mean, if you walk down Perkeomen Avenue, the sidewalk stops. And if it was just keep going, it would flow better. And obviously, if you're not going to do the promenade project and it's going to go there, that can help benefit them too, as well as people walking down there. Because a lot of people, even though Giant's not there, they still walk down to Giant and walk back. I mean, like I said, we're always seeing people walking all day and night with shopping bags from Target, Giant area and all that. So we just would like to definitely encourage you to continue it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next on the agenda this evening, excuse me, on the guest list this evening is Jack Pyho.
Betsy, here's copies.
Thank you, sir.
For everybody, they would like. Good evening, Board of Supervis-- Mr. Chair, I have two items. I will keep it brief, okay?
Thank you.
I promise. Okay. Good evening, Board of Supervisors and Resident Exeter Township. It is with great interest, I see the number one item on the agenda stating discussion and possible action related to the vice chairperson position. We can only assume until more facts are presented that relates to Mr. Hughes. As many of you know, a very concerned group of residents have started a petition for Dave Hughes resign as Exeter Township Supervisor. This is ongoing, has garnered over 11,000 views and almost 600 signatures. I'm sure this evening to formally request that Mr. Hughes resign from the Exeter Board of Supervisors. Item three on the agenda, discussion on Perkeomen Avenue Streetscape Project. This is a safety project, guys. This is a safety project. It includes construction of new sidewalks, ADA compliant ramps, lighting, and street trees along Perkeomen Avenue. Enhances the safety of the Exeter residents and students who walk along Perkeomen Avenue every day. I'm not sure how anyone can make an informed decision on this project without reviewing the scope and possible addendas, along with obtaining costs to see what the real costs are. Only then can we as residents look at the scope and addendas and understand the real costs. The projected costs were based on $2020, and looks like we're going to have a presentation tonight at a 3% escalation per year. McMahon Associates has typically been within 3.7% of budget for actual construction costs. Personally, anyone who lives or has walked along Perkeomen Avenue knows how dangerous it can be. Let's determine the costs and options first before we act and be sure we are making the Perkeomen corridor safer. Everyone who lives, walk, and uses it. Respectfully submitted, Jack Pyho. Thank you.
Thank you, Jack. Next for public comment, Fred Whitehawk.
Fred Whitehawk, West 47th Street. I think if you're going to take a change to, with regards to item number one, okay? And George, you may not like hearing this, but 2,900, over 2,900 people voted at the last election to put David Hughes in. We don't even have 10% of that, well, less than 10% of that, of people who are part of the gang of seven who want to get him out, okay? I think because we've had so many people vote on this last year overwhelmingly, that the chairperson and the vice chair need to be people who were voted in, not appointed. It would be more reflection of what the community wants and not what just a few want. The Perkeomen Avenue project, I can't see the township spending another $889,000 that they don't have to proceed with the Phase Two. It's just a matter of dollars and cents. I've looked into it, and I think it's something we need to really consider before we approve something like that. That's it.
Thank you, Fred. Next speaker is Pete, or Peter Foley, please.
My name is Peter Foley, 3403, 3405, Perkeomen Avenue. So I'm just here to talk about the sidewalk project, the Perkeomen Improvement Project, to support it. I moved into Exeter in 2018, just when the construction was starting, and we were made informed of everything that was going to happen with the construction, including the sidewalks at that time. When we moved in, our sidewalk did need some attention, but as a result of the construction, additional damage was done. Again, wasn't too concerned about it since supposedly going to happen in the next coming years. You know, I've been reaching out to the township the last couple summers, you know, asking the status of it. Down on our section, you know, similar to Vinnie, you know, we still have the temporary aprons on our driveway. There are no traffic lights on our half of the block, so it's completely dark at night. As I said, my sidewalk is pretty seriously damaged. It's a safety hazard for people walking there, where if someone trips and falls, I would be liable. But I'm not able to do anything because we're on hold until, you know, the township does the work or doesn't do the work. And then in addition, you know, I have other, you know, being recently moved in, I have other improvements I want to do to my property. But until the construction's done, I don't want to do anything that's in the right of way that the township has. Beyond that, just general support for, you know, pedestrian access personally, a little selfish, but it'd be awesome for me to walk up to Sebastiano's without having to, you know, hop over some drainage ditch, pass west of Beechwood, and then climb some rickety stairs next to the garage there. Same thing going the other direction, you know, if you want to go down to the restaurants, you know, you have to still hop around sidewalks and things like that. It's not safe at all, especially snow. You know, the snow gets piled up between all those businesses, and people have to go out into the street in bad weather to get around those. You know, also, you know, it's not hard to see when you drive up Perkeomen Avenue. It could look a lot better. So having those improvements with the track businesses, especially if something's going to happen with the promenade project eventually, having that look nice would be a good prep to attract businesses there. And also with, you know, rising gas prices, you know, encouraging pedestrian and other transportation options would be great for our community. You know, requiring people to drive, this day and age is, you know, getting a little, you know, out of hand. So, you know, I also think the return of investment on something like this is going to be realized immediately. Everyone will see it, you know, everyone who lives here, businesses, people who drive up the avenue. This isn't something that's only going to target, you know, a specific set of people who use a specific facility or, you know, have a specific hobby. This like benefits everyone. So I just wanted to raise my support in the project. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker would be Attorney McFarland. I believe it's Colin McFarland.
Good evening, Board members. I'm here on behalf of Dr. Patrick Borja, who owns the Spine and Wellness Center along Perkeomen Avenue. Dr. Borja is in favor of the Streetscape Project continuing. Dr. Borja appreciates the cost associated with finishing this project, although he would urge the board members to think about the long-term gain that the Streetscape Project would benefit the township in terms of the increased business and tax revenue, as Mr. Borja believes that this, this project happening would be a boon to local business. Mr. Borja is confident that the township will do right by him, considering the parties have an agreement. Although nevertheless, he would much prefer to, to see the project continue than have to settle this matter with the township. Thank you.
Thank you. Lastly, for comments on agenda items, I have Mr. Eric Strom, I believe. If you could also state your address for the record.
Yes, Eric Strom. I'm an attorney, 5341 Perkeomen Avenue. I'm at the inch to the Reading Country Club. Although I'm not here to complain about sidewalks down where I am because I don't have any. I'm here on behalf of Effie Klausert. She couldn't be here tonight, and she asked me to come. The owner of the Charcoal Chef. She was here previously, and I was here with her, and she voiced opposition to having sidewalks going all the way up to the Charcoal Chef. We did have a couple meetings with engineering, and we were advised that the sidewalks were not going to be extended that far. And the reason I'm here tonight is just to listen to what's going on. She still is opposed to having sidewalks to the Charcoal Chef. So I'm just stating that for the record. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Attorney. That will conclude the public comment this evening. Thank you for everybody keeping it brief to allow as the maximum number of speakers. It's much appreciated. Chair recognizes Ted Gardella.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion this evening. It's not on the agenda. I do have a definition to pass out to all the board members. The motion is one of censure. Wanted to explain what censure means and what is its purpose. George Demeter, in his book, Demeter's Manual of Parliamentary Law and Procedure, has a very good discussion of censure, both in terms of government and in terms of organizations. A censure is an assembly's expression of displeasure concerning the conduct of either a member or an officer. The motion to censure is a main motion. It needs a second. It is debatable and amendable. It's subject to all subsidiary motions. It's usually brought up under new business or under for the good of the order. A quorum must be present, and it takes a majority to adopt and vote by ballot as advisable. A member may debate his censure but cannot vote. The same rules apply to presiding officers and other officers being censured. A member or officer cannot be censured twice for the same offense. Mr. Chair, I've drafted a resolution of censure, which I will pass out to the board, and then I will read as an explanatory for the motion.
Will you hold up a minute? Do you need to move to amend the agenda?
No. So this is a resolution of the Exeter Township Board of Supervisors censuring David Hughes for improper and unprofessional conduct and behavior. Whereas Exeter Township is a second-class township and thereby operates under and in accordance with the provisions of the Pennsylvania Second Class Township Code, and whereas David Hughes is a duly elected supervisor of Exeter Township and as such sits on the five-member Board of Supervisors for the township. And whereas since taking office, Mr. Hughes has undertaken a series of improper and unprofessional actions, including, but not limited to, engaging in behavior designed to intimidate and bully township residents, employees, and members of the Board of Supervisors individually and collectively, and posting correspondence to the Board of Supervisors from individual residents on his personal social media pages with the intention of embarrassing and harassing these individuals, and engaging in behavior designed to undermine the Board of Supervisors individually and collectively, including accusations of lying, and verbally harassing township employees, and publicly insulting and denigrating township employees, engaging with township employees in an antagonistic, argumentative, and combative manner, making unreasonable and unauthorized demands upon employees, and generally treating employees unprofessionally, disdainfully, and without the proper and expected respect, and undertaking actions needing board approval at a public meeting without seeking or receiving such approval at a public meeting, and using township facilities to meet with employees for extended periods of time without making proper appointments. Whereas Mr. Hughes' conduct and behavior has besmirched Exeter Township's good name and reputation, and whereas Mr. Hughes' conduct and behavior has caused confusion amongst the township residents and other people and entities undertaking business with the township, and whereas Mr. Hughes is unilaterally undertaking activities and actions purportedly on behalf of the township, which are required to be discussed, deliberated, voted on, and approved by a majority of the Board of Supervisors at a public meeting, and whereas Mr. Hughes' conduct and behavior is violative of the Second Class Township Code and of his fiduciary duty towards Exeter Township and its residents by making requests and setting forth positions on behalf of Exeter Township where such requests and positions have not been approved by a majority of the Board of Supervisors, and whereas Mr. Hughes' conduct and behavior has created situations that may leave the township exposed to legal action due to this conduct and behavior. Now therefore, be it hereby resolved by the Board of Supervisors of Exeter Township, that number one, Mr. Hughes is hereby censured for his improper, unethical, and unprofessional conduct and behavior, and the Board of Supervisors of Exeter Township demands that Mr. Hughes immediately cease such improper, unethical, and unprofessional conduct and behavior, and commence acting in full compliance with all applicable municipal, state, and federal statutes, laws, ordinances, codes, rules, and regulations, and in accordance with his fiduciary duty to Exeter Township as a supervisor of this township. And three, the township manager is directed to post a copy of this resolution on the Exeter Township Facebook for a period of time of no less than 30 days, and send copies to the Reading Eagle, the Mercury, and WFMZ. I submit that as a motion for censure.
I second that motion.
So I have a resolution and a second. Is there additional discussion on this matter?
Additional discussion on this matter. First of all--
Chair recognizes Mr. Hughes.
Thank you. Ted, that's very impressive. The fact of the matter is, you have no, no proof. Where's the proof for all these allegations? These are your opinions. You are not the Ethics Commission. You have no right to rule on whether I violated any ethics or not. You've decided to take the law into your own hands and persecute me, prosecute me, and be the judge at the same time. We know that some of the things that I, first of all, folks, you may, I heard clapping out there. That's great. But I don't know if you understand what these gentlemen are doing with our democracy here. Because I'm a voice and I have an opinion that's different from them, I'm being, you know, attacked. For example, earlier, the speaker, Mr. Pyho, who started a petition, has hundreds of people signing to ask me to resign. Well, I'll tell you right now, folks, the people that voted for me, and I told them that I would clean out this rat's nest, I'm not about to resign at any time. So you better get used to this ugly face. But some of the areas I want to talk about where Mr. Gardella is absolutely wrong is things like where I unilaterally undertook activities and actions purportedly on behalf of the townships, which were, are required to be discussed, deliberated, and voted on. The most recent activity is our chief of police. Now, I've said publicly that I had no knowledge of the decision being made. I didn't get an opportunity to vote on it, and that's a fact. What we usually do when we take a topic and they're asking supervisors for their opinion and their position, our solicitor sends out an email, and he asks each of us to individually respond to him if we're for the issue or not. And I think, Chad, you will admit you sent out no such email. Is that correct?
Supervisor Hughes, after you and I had a discussion, I did send out an email to the board.
But, but after the decision, after the decision was already rendered, before I had a chance to debate or discuss it with any of the fellow supervisors, afterwards?
The decision, the personnel decision at that time had not yet occurred, and there was an email sent out to the entire board.
Well, that's not, that's not true, because I was contacted by our manager and then later by you, who told me that the decision was made and our chief was, was leaving. And I, and I spent the whole afternoon trying to convince everyone to change their mind. The chief was treated very badly. We had a contract with him that would have expired in March. And for some reason, we had to, we had to kick him out early. Now we're paying two chiefs. It's just a waste of township money, and there was no good reason, and I think we discussed this, that to, to abbreviate the chief's, the chief's contract here. No one called me when this debate was going on. It wasn't you that was driving it until after you spoke to me. So one of the other supervisors must have been talking to each other to arrive at this decision. And our chairman, when I had the discussion with him, he admitted he didn't talk to me. He said, I--
Mr. Hughes, I encourage you not to speak on my behalf.
Well, I'm going to, I spoke to you. It's, it's, it's not hearsay. It's a conversation that we had.
By definition, it's hearsay, and we're not going to argue personnel decisions in front of this group.
Well, you can see that this whole thing is, is just phony baloney.
Does that conclude your remarks?
I'm, I'm still remarking. Thank you.
I will allow a little more latitude, and then we're going to hear from the other members of this board.
So I, I, what I do want is for each item that you're accusing me of, I would like you to provide the facts, the incident specific to the, for the charges. And if you publish, and if you publish this in the paper and any of it is false, I'm going to seek legal counsel and find out what I could do. This is unprecedented, unnecessary, and I'm appalled by your behavior. In fact, it's amazing to me that this is what governing of Exeter Township has become. Basically, room temperature, grade school, cat fight. Mr. Volmer has a lot of reasons to dislike me. He was thrown out of a GOP meeting where the Ole Valley Police Department had to escort him out.
Mr. Hughes, this is a motion regarding you, not Mr. Volmer.
It may not be, but he, he also was angry at me because I didn't go protest at a GOP meeting. So these are, well, because it leads to the activity of what's here. This is, they're persecuting me. This is a vendetta. And I, I voted for you guys to be on the board. It's absolutely amazing. You set me up. And I'm the only elected official that has a title on this board. I'm the vice chairman. Michelle's the only other elected official. And I want everyone to note, as you probably have, the nominated people are the ones running the township now. You had no vote in what, what's going to happen here in the future. So other than, I don't think I need to defend myself. What's really insulting is this document.
Thank you for your comments. Are there any additional comments among the board?
I have none.
Take a vote on it?
Having no additional comments from the board, I call the vote. All those in favor of the resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, four oh vote. Next on the agenda is discussion and possible action related to the vice chairperson position. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to replace Vice Chair Hughes with Supervisor Gardella.
Having a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Chair seconds. Having a motion and a second, is there additional discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to make a couple comments.
Chair recognizes Supervisor Volmer.
There's a loss of confidence in Mr. Hughes being able to act as an officer of this board, representing all the residents of the township, and working collaboratively with this board. Mr. Hughes continues to focus on the past, seeking his perception of corrections for past personal slights. And the board needs to work together and move to the future for the township residents. Mr. Hughes also conducts, or conducted at township offices in the RCC, I'm sorry. Mr. Hughes' conduct at the township offices and RCC in his interaction with our employees and our solicitors do not reflect the minimum standard of respect and courtesy. His behavior with the residents, both in person and on social media, does not align with the rest of the board. We want to make that perfectly clear. And it lacks professionalism and common courtesy. And his conduct, with total lack of disrespect for this entire board of supervisors, and trying to bully us when he doesn't get his way. These are the reasons why I feel that Mr. Hughes is not qualified to be the vice chair of the Board of Supervisors.
Any additional comments among the board? Chairperson comments in agreement with Mr. Volmer's comments. I will also add that for me, there was a red line crossed last week, Mr. Hughes, and the threat of physical violence among another member of this board will not be tolerated. And as such, I agree with everything else that was said, including you've completely lost me with a threat of physical violence among a member or multiple members of this board. I'm completely disgusted, and I've lost all respect for you.
Ditto.
With that, we've had a motion and a second. All those in favor of Mr. Gardella as vice chair--
Excuse me, Chairman?
Say aye.
Should you remove me first?
Aye.
Should you remove me first before you--
It's a motion to replace Vice Chair Hughes with Supervisor Gardella.
The motion contained both elements. Aye. Chair votes aye. I'll assume that's a four oh one vote. Did you vote in the affirmative, Ms. Kircher? Next on the agenda is discussion and possible action related to interactions with township staff and our solicitor. Do I have a motion?
I have a motion to limit township supervisors' interactions with township staff and our solicitor. I guess we have to discuss-- I guess we have to discuss on timeframe on that.
So having a motion to limit the discussion, is there a second?
I'd like to ask Mr. Volmer if I could make a friendly amendment instead of seconding.
Mr. Volmer, would you-
I agree.
-accept such a-
Yes, I would.
Mr. Gardella, you have the-
Well, I would suggest that we amend the motion to be that we limit interactions of individual supervisors with our township staff and our solicitor to only those interactions that are made by appointment or through the chair or through the township manager. What we have right now are people who are making unreasonable demands on township staff and are engaging our solicitor on their own and to the, to the cost of the, of the Board of Supervisors. So I would, I would recommend that we limit it to those interactions that are either through the board or through the township manager, and that those interactions should be by appointment and with a reasonable timeframe.
I'll amend it to that.
I would like to add something. I don't like what you say, Ted, about reasonable time to come in and to spend with the employees. It depends on what subject you have, if you need to spend a lot of time with a certain employee to get all the facts. But I don't like the word limited. I think that we need to be free to come in and talk to the people here if we have questions that we have to ask. And that's all I have to say.
Respectfully, Supervisor Kirchner, what I'm suggesting is that we work through appointments and that we work through our chair and our township manager. If there's an extended conversation and our employee agrees and an appointment is made, that's very different from someone just dropping in and spending an hour or two.
Well, I don't like having to make an appointment to come in. I can be driving past here and think of something and I want to stop in, and you're saying I can't do it. Uh-uh. I have the right to come in and talk to anybody at any time. Now, I respect that right. I don't take up hours and hours and hours, but if there's something, I want to have contact with them. And especially if it's something that I, we have to make a decision on, and I want to get all the facts. So I just don't like it.
Ms. Kirchner, could I ask you for a suggestion? And how do we limit other supervisors from coming in and talking to someone for three hours and talking about personal business, not township business? How do we limit that?
If one, I don't know how to eliminate it at this time. I haven't thought about it. I didn't know about any of this. But what I will say is that hopefully the people will understand that they can't be in here. But I'm sorry, that, that's like telling me what I can and can't do. And as a supervisor, I can't come in, I have a question, I can't do that. I never take up somebody's time long. I'm always very, I know what work they have to do and get done. But it's like censoring me or somebody else. I don't want that.
Mr. Volmer, would you consider laying your motion on the table for, till the next meeting to allow additional deliberation by the board members to-
Yes, I would.
-come up with a mutually agreeable solution-
Yes.
-in light of Ms. Kirchner's remarks?
Yes. I'd just like to withdraw my motion and table it to the next meeting.
Ms. Kirchner, would you find that acceptable?
Yes.
Having a withdrawal motion, the motion will lay on the table. Next one. Sorry, Chad, were you about to say something?
No, I think with the motion being withdrawn, we'll, we can have further discussions later on.
Exactly. Next on the agenda is discussion on the Perkyomen Avenue Streetscape project. I believe we have a guest this evening to help facilitate that discussion, Chris from McMahon Associates.
May I speak here for a moment?
Chris, before recognizing you, may I recognize our township-
Yes, absolutely.
-manager?
This is Chris Bauer from McMahon. And I have asked Chris at the beginning to let us know where we want to be at the end, and then go back and bring us to that point. So if, oh, I'm sorry, I do this all the time. So, audience and board, if you think he's starting at the end, he is at my request, and then he will go back and recreate how we got to where we are today. Thank you.
Okay.
Chair? Sorry, for one more moment, may I please recognize-
Just want to recognize that Mr. Hughes has left the meeting.
Thank you. For those watching on TV, it is noted Mr. Hughes has left the meeting. Any other questions among the board before recognizing our guest? Chris, thank you for coming this evening. We really do appreciate it. Seems like you have some planned remarks. May you start with those?
I do. I do have some planned remarks. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Is that right? Yeah, okay. Thank you very much for providing, is that better? Okay. Providing me the opportunity to brief the Board of Supervisors again. I am here to talk about the Perkyomen Avenue project. We are literally at the one-yard line with this project. All the engineering is complete. We have all of our approvals from PennDOT, and it is ready to go to bid. So just as a brief review, we received 4.2, $5 million worth of funding in various forms. The first pot of money was federal funding, known as the Transportation Alternative Set Aside Program. That was $1 million. That was spent on the Phase One improvements that included the lighting that you see out there and the improvements at East Never Sink. The next set was a multimodal transportation fund, which is a PennDOT program that encourages these types of projects. They're multimodal. So it's sidewalks, it's bicycle, it's pedestrian bridges, those types of things. And that was in 2.95. And that's what's funding the Phase Two improvements. We also received a PennDOT automated red light enforcement funding, almost $300,000 for the signal at Perkyomen Avenue and East Never Sink. It would be a complete reconstruction of that signal, and it will include pedestrian facilities, which it does not now. So Phase Two moving forward. The current construction opinion and probable cost is between 3 and 3.6 million dollars. We're giving a range because we are going, we were this close out to bid. The state funding grant for construction is a total of 320, $3,254,000. That's the AR, the Arley funding and the multimodal funding. The funding for this program is 70/30 for the multimodal funding. So to access the state funding, the township has to provide a match of $886,700. Those funds can be a mix of construction inspection, construction administration, and any construction costs. So basically, how these programs work, it is a reimbursement program. So a, an invoice is, is generated by the construction engineering firm and the construction firm, the inspection firm and the construction firm. That goes to the township. The township then approves that invoice and pays the contractor. The contractor then, or the township then asks PennDOT for reimbursement of those funds, and they reimburse 70%.
So I'd like to ask a question. I, you know, I apologize. I hope that you won't mind that we ask questions during this, because I've read this prior to. So according to this match and your explanation that we can be construction costs or any associated costs, we have, to date, after September 2020, we've already spent $830,400.
Yes.
So we've already accomplished our match nearly, correct?
Correct. It was not set up that way. It was set up that all the funding was going to construction. So that, is that eligible for match?
But, but it is eligible for match.
No, moving forward, it's eligible for match. The construction is eligible for match. The construction inspection and administration is eligible for match.
So, but we've already spent $800,000.
Yes, and that was spent on engineering that was not eligible at that point.
So the reality is, because we've all heard these numbers thrown about, that this project will only cost the township $800,000. The reality is, we're already going to be at 1.6 million. Because if we have to match going forward, and we've already spent $830,000, then asking us to provide an additional match of 886 is going to put us at 1.7 million dollars in cost for this project. And that's before any potential overruns over the, your, your projected construction costs.
That is how it was set up.
I just, I want, you know, I want that information out because we have heard a lot of different numbers thrown around. And this presentation, I think, is valuable in that we can finally put some real numbers out there, that this is going to be at minimum 1.7 million dollars. And, and that's-
But moving forward, it's the 886,000 dollars.
Right. But we have already spent $830,000.
That's correct.
This just helps us understand.
Right.
That's, that's the purpose of this, so we really appreciate it.
Absolutely. That's what I'm here for.
Yes, exactly.
I'm here to answer the question, so that's fine. The other items that, that still are outstanding, final construction documents that have to be uploaded into PennBid, the advertisement and the closeout of the first grant. The first grant, which is Phase One, was brought in right on budget. Looks like it's going to be, once we're done closeout, looks like we're going to be just a little under budget on that one.
Again, point, a point here. So you're talking about the construction budget?
Yes.
Not the engineering?
Not the, not the total budget of the project.
Correct.
So we need to be really clear for our residents that what you're talking about being under budget is construction only. Because according to your own document, we spent $769,000 on Phase One that, that wasn't part of, of the construction budget. So when you say we're under budget, I'd like the community to understand, this is just the construction budget. The project itself, which we, you know, I, I have never seen any of the total project budgets that would indicate, hey, you know, we, we expect to do 1.158 in construction and then another 800,000 in other associated costs. And then according to you on this slide, or on the previous slide, we still have another $12,000 yet to go to closeout TASSA on Phase One.
Yes, that's an estimate.
Right. So we're really closer to $2 million total budget as opposed to 1.158. 1.158 was the construction cost.
Correct. That's correct. So Phase One, and this is, and we'll start with this. Phase One, and this will try to show you some of the things that occurred with Phase One and why the number is what it is for engineering.
Can I just ask a quick question?
Sure.
What, was there a phase before Phase One?
Yes, there was actually a phase, a PennDOT phase that came through here.
And what did that cost us?
Nothing.
Okay, so there was no costs associated before Phase One started in any, any cost to the township?
No.
You know-
Not for, not for the PennDOT project.
Okay.
So none of the traffic analyses were done prior to, to start of Phase One? Would those have been costs that we incurred before Phase One began?
I only got involved with Phase One. So there was probably some con, very high-level concept planning that was done very early on. But then TASSA started, and we were able to use the design for the sidewalk, not the sidewalks, but the curb lines for, for the PennDOT project. So there was coordination with PennDOT, but they took care of the design, they took care of the engineering, they took care of the construction.
But if Phase One began in 2019, we do see charges in 2018 for various projects paid to your organization. So would those have been pre-Phase One? I think that's the question-
Yeah, because I'm coming up with-
There were charges prior to Phase One.
Well, the, well, Phase One, so Phase One ended in 2020.
Right.
Phase, Phase One started, it was not, yeah, it was an 18 number, so yeah, it was 2018.
Okay, so none of these charges that we see on our check register for 2018, you're saying none of those were pre-Phase One? Those are all included in the 700 and-
Yes, yes, absolutely.
$769,600 that we paid for design and engineering in Phase One?
Yes, absolutely. But Phase One completed, and what, the way this was, the way you have to design a phased project like this, you do preliminary design for all of it. So, and, and the reason why you do that is, you don't want, like, with, prime example with the TASSA project, you know, we put in lights, right? The pedestrian lighting. You don't want to put that pedestrian light in the wrong place for where we have to put sidewalk in. So the fun, the, the project in, or the engineering costs in, during the Phase One timeline, was all of the pre-construction activities for Phase One, which was the engineering utilities, right-of-way, and preliminary engineering of Phase Two. Because you, we had to have it all as one in order to make sure that we didn't have the conflicts coming up later on. The worst thing we would want is for us to, in one phase, put something in the way for the next phase. So that's why that number is large. And when you look at-
I think both numbers are large. So-
Correct.
You know, I, I don't want to say one number is larger. They're essentially somewhat equal between the two. And that's what's been very, very difficult to analyze this, is not being able to correlate the cost to either Phase One or Phase Two. I get that there are integrated components here, but to not be able to have a project manager identify with fidelity those charges that should be a portion of Phase One or Phase Two, I think is an indictment of the project management.
It's not an indictment of the project management. It was the way it was set up. In the, in the beginning, this project was always supposed to be all one phase. It was supposed to be done all together. We were going to co-mingle the funds. We weren't able to do that because of some right-of-way issues. We had to split them up, and that happened early on. We had to split the two projects up. So-
I, I don't think that was ever well communicated. If that's true, I don't think it was communicated either to this board or to this community.
I mean, it's previous board. I can tell you, I've, I've had that conversation. And, and there were others involved with that conversation with PennDOT, and there were real reasons why we had to go that way.
Okay, let's continue.
Okay. So, like I said, Phase One was funded through the TASSA. All the grants were dedicated for construction only, and that is almost typical of all TASSA projects. So the improvements were the lighting and the East Never Sink roadway reconstruction. The township responsibilities for that were the preliminary design, final design, permitting, utility coordination, right-of-way, and construction administration and inspection.
So really, one, one more point here. Really, the responsibility for Phase One was 50/50, close to 50/50. If we're spending 700, almost 800,000, and then 1.1 in construction, I mean, you can say 45/55, but the reality is, the township was really responsible for a much larger percentage of this project than I think has been previously presented. And, and I'm, you know, I'm familiar with construction projects in my realm, which is in education. I'm not as familiar with municipal. And I think the only person here who probably has experience with a lot of municipal projects is, is Betsy. And so I don't know if that's reasonable and customary, that it's a, nearly a 50/50 split between grant funds and township. that it's nearly a 50/50 split between grant funds and township.
To me, it's concerning. When there's a 70/30... I'm sorry. Sorry, people. When there's a 70/30, or an 80/20, or a 50/50 match, at the end, both sides should say it's pretty close to what the match was. Or, at the very beginning, it needs to be said, township, your match is somewhat proportionate to the grant money received, but in addition to that, there will be X, Y, and Z that cannot be included in the match. And whenever any grant is given, there's often restrictions that engineering services or inspection services or some other thing cannot be included as the match. That happens, but that needs to be highlighted, bold, underlined, the whole bit, so that people know.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And I think early on, we had those discussions with earlier boards. So, Phase Two, again, all the grant funds, the way it was set up, was that all funds were dedicated for construction. Improvements included completing the lighting and plant, street trees, East Never Sink signal reconstruction, sidewalk and driveway reconstruction, and then also sidewalk construction along East Never Sink to Circle Avenue. Again, township responsibilities under the grant, preliminary design, final design, permitting, utility coordination, right-of-way, construction administration, and inspection. So, the Phase One update, the original construction contract, again, was 1.15. We're at, final inspection has been conducted, the punch list isn't generated, and they're working on the final contract closeout as we speak. It is based on the budget, or based on what we're being told at this point, we will be on budget or under budget for construction. And I want to make this clear. It was bid and constructed during COVID, which we had some interesting requirements and some issues with supply chain and everything else, and we still brought it in on time, on budget, rather. Phase Two, I'll just reiterate that the project has all PennDOT and agency approvals. The project is ready to advertise and bid. So, to give you a little bit of idea, this was a multi-stage project. The point at which we went from final design of Phase Two occurred right around September of 2020. Before that, we were spending engineering on both Phase One, which was preliminary and final, and Phase Two, we were doing preliminary. So, part of this was conceptual design. Then we went into preliminary design for the entire corridor. We included conceptual design work. There was things that are not in this project that we looked at at a conceptual level. Sometimes, we went as far as full design because, for instance, the Green Space Trail from 36th Street to 33rd Street on the south side there. That was completely designed and permitted. And as it happens, the board decided it wasn't something that they wanted. So, it was removed. This happens. It happens quite regularly on projects like this. We've had instances where we have multiple property owner concept plans, multiple. You know, we looked at removing the median on 422, under this project, from the west of Fairlane Road. Because that barrier was viewed as a hindrance to economic development. Those are some of the concept plans that were done during this period before September 2020.
So, the question then is, were we billed for those things, even if they weren't included in the final? But because you say this is preliminary design, so I'm assuming we were billed for that design work?
Yes, you were. You were billed for that design work, and it's part of that dollar figure.
So, it's great that those things were removed from the final project, but the reality is, we still paid for that design.
You did. You paid for that design because one board decided it was important, another board decided that it wasn't. So, there have been changes throughout this project that have affected it. Simply splitting that project up, where we had everything as one project and having to change the plans because we needed to split it up because of our right-of-way issues, that was a problem. And it was something that nobody saw at the time.
No one saw the right-of-way issues?
We did not see the issues that it would be as hard to clear it as we thought. There was a gap right-of-way issue that only came up when the survey was complete. Other things that happened during this time, plans and specs and permitting for the demolition of Radio Shack. Again, the full final design of Phase One, the permitting of Phase One, right-of-way clearance of Phase One, and then utility coordination of Phase One and Phase Two, because you have to do it all together as one.
May I speak here? Supervisor Gardella, oftentimes, I have seen a project like this be planned, the conceptual design, some of the engineering, sometimes even some earth movement takes place, and the board will decide, you know what? In this case, I don't want this green space trail. And the thought is, I am not throwing another dime into this project. I can tell we're already over budget. This can be eliminated. It may seem like a waste, but in the end, we can't say that it is. I've also seen situations like this, where 10 years down the road, somebody with a memory will say, you know what, we designed that. Can we just resurrect this? So, it's possible it's not a complete waste of money when something is designed and then put aside.
Okay, thank you.
So, after September 2020, final design for Phase One is complete. Preliminary design for Phase One is complete. TASSA is awarded. Construction administration and inspection of Phase One begins. Phase Two final design begins. So does the permitting, right-of-way, and utility coordination. So, total engineering paid about approximately 1.6. After September 2020, we spent $830,400. Engineering on final design was 561, and the construction inspection and administration was 269. And then, again, the spent on, before September 2020, was 769,600.
So, this question is... So, Betsy, we had a check record that we have been sent and analyzed and gone through and totaled. And so, I see charges from 2018 forward for McMahon at 1.814 million. So, that would be... Is there something that you can help us understand?
There were other projects, there were other projects in that that we did.
I just learned this in the last 24 hours.
So, we had projects such as the two traffic signal upgrade projects that we completed for the township. I believe there was a traffic signal assessment and asset management plan put together during that time. Land development.
Is that for a different interest, a different stretch of roadway?
Oh, no, it's the entire, that was done for the entire township. So, that what we can do is take that asset management plan and go for granting, grant funds. So, we've been able to get two Greenlight Go grants for the township using that using that asset management plan. That has upgraded nine of your 20 intersections. So, there are other projects that went on. There were land development reviews that we were involved with.
So, again, my question is, you know, it would be helpful to delineate these charges towards either Phase One or Phase Two or other projects. Because if we just look at the raw numbers, which is what we had...
Sure.
It's, again, it's $200,000 more than the 1.6 million that's already been paid. And yet, you also, in this presentation, have stated that we still have not only the construction costs, but we still have almost $400,000 to go with your firm for inspections and putting things out to bid and so forth. So, we'll have paid, if we take that other $200,000 out of this equation, because it was for other projects, which, again, it would be helpful to know what they were, we're still at $2 million for this project for engineering. And so, one of my questions is, again, you know, I'm used to projects that involve architects and engineers in the education space. And so, this really is a question for you, Betsy. Is it, you know, reasonable and customary for a third of the project cost to simply be design and engineering? Because if we're going to see a $4 million total cost, a million in construction for Phase One, and then potentially 3.6 million for Phase Two, and then $2 million in just design and engineering, it's about a third of the total project cost just for design and engineering.
Right. To me, this project has not been usual and customary in any sense of the word. And Chris and I went around and around yesterday, in a very friendly fight we had, where I'm saying, why can't we identify what's Phase One and what's Phase Two? And Chris saying, because so much of it is linked from the beginning and forward. And my next question was, well, then, why did we create a Phase One and Phase Two? And he has answered that tonight. So, I'm not ready to send up the white flag saying we can't come to more closer numbers, but at this point, we just don't have them. But your question was, is it customary that one-third of it would be design and engineering? There is no answer to that. It depends on the project.
Okay.
Yeah.
And you did provide us with additional information just tonight that we got from Ms. Savage that, you know, we haven't really had a chance to review yet. So, I do appreciate that extra information, appreciate the presentation. I'm just hoping that the community is, both those who are here and those who are watching, is hearing these actual numbers so that when we see, whether it's on social media or when we're in conversation that, hey, this project's only going to cost X amount of dollars, that's certainly not true.
Correct. It's not true.
Thank you.
So, one thing that I will state, when we bill, especially when it's other project, like, if we have multiple project numbers, that 1.6 is coming just from this project. That's easily broken out. All those other projects are separate. And those are easily broken out also. So, if there were land development charges or charges to other projects, I can break those out.
That would be helpful.
That's simply done.
If it's simply done, just to ask the follow-up question, I believe we were entertaining the idea of maybe discussing the bid or no bid on Monday. So, is it simply done that we could have the information the next few days? Could I ask that question?
Yes. Actually, I don't have it with me. I don't want to misquote.
No, I understand. I'm just, now, maybe the board, you know, decides not to, but we were sort of hopeful of making the decision perhaps on the Monday meeting. So, not to unnecessarily hurry you, but because that's when we're trying to make this decision, I'd be much obliged if you were able to perhaps get it to Betsy as soon as you could.
Yes, absolutely. That's not a problem at all.
And just for point of clarification, what you're talking about, and so we would take the motion to go out to bid off the table, because we have that on the table right now. So, you're talking about...
I think we want to leave that on there and use this...
No, no, I'm saying for Mondays, my point of clarification is for Monday's meeting, we want to get this information. But the intent in Monday is to take the motion to bid this project off the table, given the extra information that we've gotten.
My remark, thank you for asking for clarification. In light of our, I believe, our desire that it's on the table, I was asking, Chris, if you could get us this additional information post-haste so we could perhaps keep it on the table for Monday. And I was just disclosing to him, it's a quick turnaround, but I was not doing it without merit. It was because we're trying to... Now, the will of this board might be, we don't make the final decision on Monday. That's, but it was my previously on-the-record-stated wish that perhaps we would get to the bid, no bid decision on Monday for what it's worth. So, did that clarify?
Yes, thank you very much.
So, are there... Thank you for presenting. Before you step away from the microphone, could I ask the members of the board first? And then I'll ask you, Betsy, as well. But members of the board first, are there any additional questions for Christopher, since he was kind enough to appear?
Not at this time.
No, thanks, Chris. I got a lot more clarification with those other projects and then, you know, also the other costs that were associated with this. It makes a lot more sense now.
And I do appreciate the presentation. I appreciate the information that was sent. You know, my goal is really to bring this to clarity, not only for this new board, but also for the community as well. So, thank you very much.
And I'm happy to give you any information you need.
And then, Leslie, Betsy, did you have any final questions for Christopher?
Not for Chris. I just want to clarify to the public. The decision on Monday will be whether to go out for a bid for Phase Two. Once those bids come back in, then the board will decide whether or not to continue with Phase Two, based on the bid. So, this is just, are we going out for a bid? And what do we have to have in our heads as we do this? Thank you.
Good clarification. Chris, thank you.
Thank you.
So, next on the agenda, we have public comment, non-agenda items. I believe we have one, pardon me. Mr. Howell, we have you on the list for non-agenda items. May you state your name and address and continue to comment?
Tom Howell, Post Office Box 4635. Past, present, and future, it is written that God knows everything. So, the situation with Mr. Hughes is certainly known by him. It is too bad that the public doesn't have more information regarding what goes on here in Exeter Township with the government that we pay for. One consideration is the fact that two of the members, Carl Staples and Diana Reiser, quit. We don't know, or we maybe suspect what transpired between those two individuals and Mr. Hughes. Jack Pejo is here today. I'm sure he will agree with me that people voted for those two individuals. And my opinion is, they were cheated out of their votes. The other two items is the meeting where you discuss the group homes. I believe, from the conversations and what transpires, that the board should read all the information that those group homes have to abide by to have a license. And also, the zoning information should be reviewed. A long time ago, a judge told a business owner that he could no longer be in business. I was told that that person cried. He didn't follow the rules, and a bunch of people made sure that the government knew about the situation. And it's the same with the group homes. They are supposed to do certain things, and if they don't, it's up to the township government to make sure that they do or contact the people to pull the license. The other situation is the same with the meeting with the library. There's a bunch of laws regarding the library and your responsibility and cooperation with the library. And if you read those laws, you'll determine what you have to do for the library. I am disappointed about the comment that David Hughes said about Mallory. Because Michelle knows all the work that was done for the library, the library that was in the Dunn Farm. And for somebody to criticize somebody like that in a public forum is terrible. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Howell. I just wish to make two additional comments for the good of the board before seeking a motion to adjourn. First motion, the first comment, pardon me, is there's been some comment about supervisors elected versus appointed. It's fair comment. Residents can share whatever thoughts they have. My comment to that would be the second-class township code. Trials no such distinction. So perhaps keep that in mind. Second point, I recently appointed liaisons to various sub-organizations in this township who serve at the pleasure of the board, but at the discretion of the chair. I will now revise two of those liaison assignments, starting first with the Reading Country Club. I will name myself the lead to the Reading Country Club and ask this evening for Mr. Volmer to take a second on that in lieu of Mr. Hughes. And as it relates to the police and emergency service liaison, I will revert, essentially reverse that course there and have Mr. Volmer maintain the lead, and I, the chair, will serve a second to that group. And are there any questions among the board members of the liaison updates?
No.
Betsy, do you have any questions? Did you capture that?
I wrote it down. No questions.
Thank you. With that, I greatly appreciate the public turnout and comments. It's very helpful for us as a board, and we greatly value those opinions. I would accept a motion to adjourn if there is one.
I'll make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.